Favorite say aye?
Aye.
The old business there being none. To see the purpose for tonight, probably is accessory. It's like it's sent out. What should we do? Everybody for me definitions. Well, accessory apartment parking space, which has a 200 square foot minimum. And short term rental only one because I thought that they were the definition. Likely to be involved. So the other one I had some general prohibitions by looking over the documents that we received last month. And they are, we can't pass an ordinance or change to the zoning that prohibits density. And but what we can do so we can say that that building accessory well, when you can't be more of this 75%. On our building, that it's got to be considered a secondary building. And it is only and I found this with comment here is it's only for lots. That are zone single family detached house.
I saw that last night. I read that.
I now, I guess that's art part two. I mean, whatever you want to do, but it's interesting that. I don't even know if the historic district, I know it's a single family housing, but I never.
None of our works.
And the David Dalstrom letter just put out that came out at four o'clock today. Basically said that historic may be. Oh, not covered on state. They might not have to abide by the accessory dwelling.
I mean, it is crazy how our historic district has.
Yeah.
I mean, it basically can tell the world that it's a height. It's unbelievable, but that's what it is. All right. And then. One of the other interesting thing is the new building accessory dwelling has to build the relevant building codes, which is fabulous. And we can set parking requirements. Just think about what that means. Okay. Because if you're going to slap one of these things in your backyard, okay, or your side yard. We can, as a group, say, if you have an accessory dwelling unit, you must have parking. And that off street parking must be at least 200 square feet. However. Okay. And every good argument starts with the but you must have a process, a waiver process. That parking pending on. Now. I mean, how many of you are familiar with the waiver process if you're required to plant trees in a critical area?
Mm hmm.
We can wait. You can waive it here in town for a very minor fee for a trade. I forget. Yeah, 70 bucks, 25 bucks. I forget what it is. But if you don't have the room to stick, for example, you have to contain trees in. You don't have the room. You can make this cash waiver payment to the town. So. I think there are the highlights and I, you know, but it's up to us to come up with a list of things and I'm hopeful that. And since we have. Commissioners representative onboard, whether the commissioners want to write this zoning ordinance or whether. We planning zoning should write the ordinance and get it. Look over bothering you, the town attorney.
It's us.
To okay, okay. So what is it we can do?
Um. I think right now, I think with this meeting. Maybe do it by paper case and come up with what we like, what we don't like. And then at the next meeting, we could put together. Like and go from there. Yes.
All good. All right.
Um, the one thing that I saw A A County's one is. And I know it's coming up to talk about it says. Accessory dwelling unit may not be a mobile home or a manufactured home. However, the ones that we saw down at their city, they did prefab and. Not saying keep it on the wheels, but I know they have to get it there, but um. Hold. Okay, but the prefab houses are built. By building standards that we have. So I don't know why that's even in here. And we're going to get to the fact of. We need to come up with a better definition on what mobile home, mobile homes are no more all manufactured than what we want to have too. So as of January first.
All all rooms that sit on the. It's like thing with this is because there's no legal definition of trailer anymore. If you have a home that is a pre manufactured house, it has to sit on a true foundation. It cannot sit on a trailer frame. It cannot sit on blocks. It has to sit on a true, if it's on tires, you have to have a true foundation. Pick it up and put it on a concrete slab. That's a slab foundation. That's different.
So then now it's going like a container.
No.
If it comes in on wheels and has a skirt around it.
No. So you're going to take all that off.
Right.
And you'd sit on a block foundation like we all have and it'll look like a normal house. There's a couple in town now that are like that. You couldn't tell unless you're in it that it was a trailer.
And when we're saying prefab over in.
And then most prefabs come on flat beds. They frame them and put them together. They're built through a regular house built somewhere else. Modular houses.
The. Fire chief put his in. Um, that it came in four, in fact, you it came in. Uh, like sections and they trained the set there fifty month and moved them over. So it's a regular history. Um, and even looking at the videos of the new so called what everybody called single wives now. They're beautiful. Um, and so they don't look like one.
If you're. Um. The senior community of your bike crafting, those are all double ones.
They are.
If you couldn't.
I'd like to drive through and see.
This our building code require foundation. It's happening. Yeah.
It's not right now.
It's official.
Just has no trend, no.
Because I mean, but but the state isn't taking away from us saying that they have to require to. Then to apply our building code and maybe our building code directs back at foundation.
Yeah.
They're capable of supporting the way they.
Yeah, and we. So if you buy the trailer.
If you need to first of all, stop buying trailers because they don't exist in the law.
Then you can buy more.
Yeah.
A lot of people right now are buying sixty trailers for some. Building code.
I essentially think the manual actually has actually have a HUD sticker on them.
Do you?
The more of the mobile homes.
Because they may have been for now.
Mobile means. Like titles like the car.
Yeah. If and the framing was different, like if you have ever torn apart one, the inside walls are. Like furries for the most part and insulation is crappy. The whole bottom of it is not put on like real.
No.
Anything. It's a ladder metal frame underneath it. Once you take it apart, you can shake the crap out of it.
Trailers. Can't say.
Was there framed?
But if you're looking at how they go, they're actually have two by six walls.
Yeah.
Because there is still.
Well, what what I'm saying is we're focusing back on the accessory dwelling unit. If we have a change to the building code that says that explains that your. Building code requires a foundation for as well. Okay, after that, because the ADUs are fine as well, we. It really doesn't matter whether. Trailer, mobile home, modular unit. It's a dwelling. It has to have a foundation theoretically. We have that requiring. Because what we want to do is going to hang on to what little estate is left.
Yeah.
Okay, and.
Is anything prior to seventy six grandfathered in?
Well, the ones that are already here are already here.
Yeah.
We we made to modify.
They won't. They don't have to. If they are, for whatever reason, if that trailer caught fire and burned down, they couldn't. Yeah, it's already nonconforming.
People say, yeah, the only reason I have a home is because we have. Home or zoning zoning. So. Yeah, they all of a sudden say you can't move your manufacturer homes. No, okay, you can't move your trailer to the level. You know what I mean? So if we we handle it. Part on the base, which is this this mortgage for foundation, then we really don't have to sweat it in the future, wherever. Or nomenclature for dwelling.
Just add it to what we have. Yeah, because of what we have. So we have no trailers, but you have.
All the words. So that's the definition we're hanging at as well.
Um. The other thing that's in here, and I'm going to go to the state one next, but some of them. This talks about what the definition of front is and all that kind of stuff. The one thing that was talked about in that seminar that I went through that I said at the last one. We had gone back and forth about adding a meter, not adding a meter. But what they were saying is there is no need to add another meter because this place is only going to run one bathroom. So it's not like it's not. Um, and the other thing that was talked about is. AA County started for many years when they did it is they're owner occupied. So it can't be. We're going to rent all this out. And if you do rent it out, can't sublet the second place. So we have to figure out how to. Or that. I don't know if anybody else. This is something you don't want. Or we will. You don't want owner occupied, not to be.
Well, if it was me and I was building, when I was building, it's a no.
But there are owners in town that have multiple properties and they don't live on site. How does that affect them?
They have to be sorry. And this, and I'm going to give the example. Um, this is. Okay, what even was said in this in seminar was mom and dad. Was big house. They put an auxiliary unit. They moved into a smaller one and kids moving to the bigger house. Still owner occupied.
You know, he was working so we could be on it. To rent as well. Just as for you. Right now he can, if the new ones go in place. See that that I have conflicting feelings about that because like he said. If you go to it, it's a separate dwelling on the house. As long as you have the proper parking and all that, what's what's really the issue? In rent.
It's. Smaller lots, maybe?
No, it's for annual. If you have.
Ample.
Ample parking. That you're allowed, you're not obviously you're not allowed to spill it into the tree. You'd have to have parking. And if that's in your driveway and they just have a. Walkway to the house because that would be considered parking, in my opinion.
How many parking spots?
I think you know at least two.
That that's what's supposed to be solved. Anyway, but look, you know, we have a, our definition wrong. And building units include living tours for domestic or other employees for attending. As in in law or accessory apartment, guest house, caretaker residence. So. Right now, what we allow as dwellings can do it now. An accessory debt, you can build a home for that purpose. We know dwelling for that purpose. Right now, an accessory unit is allowing you to get away with or to change some basics. Example, water and silver. So there's no hookup fees that benefit. The town. Our town's losing connection fees. Yeah, we they're paying the plumbing plumber to hook it up. That's, you know, well, that's just a fee to hook it up. That's not paying any money to the town. So the town reaps no benefit. All right. Um. This is our time to put in there what it is we think is reasonable for the town. And I don't truly, they didn't mean accessory dwellings be Airbnb's. I mean, that's how it's called. All right, that is how it's going to wind up. And you can see the problems.
Yeah.
If somebody was living in the back, okay, they they parked their vehicle there. And we only have to wait until the spring when they buy a boat for it to be a problem. Okay. But if you're running it out as an Airbnb, I mean, the one here on Marcus Street, the one that the guy built on that little footprint. He had six cars there this weekend. There were cars everywhere.
Which which one? Two ten?
Seventy. Yeah, I don't know which one, the newer, the two that went up two stores.
That's privately owned.
Does it?
That's not an air. That's not Airbnb.
Still has six cars.
Yeah.
Okay, and he doesn't lose her.
She she.
See, well, she must have had family in the United States. Okay, um, but what I'm saying is. The point is one parking spot. I don't believe that anywhere is sufficient. For someone to have an air, you know, have an Airbnb. That's not who's coming. I mean, a lot of nonsense that is.
Yeah, she toured the original down, had Dave Gordon build her a new build. And she hasn't been upstairs yet.
Yeah, a week ago she had two pogs delivered to furniture. Okay, now, honest to God, I thought that acid been done for months. Now, maybe it was temporary furniture and bricks. I have. Uh, what I mean, it's staggering. I mean, there was like seventy five feet square feet per person in that thing. But that's, and I don't care, but that's just what's going to happen with this and.
Well, you can't stop.
If someone has an event like that, like an open house for a new, like she was celebrating her new home with her family. And not enough parking spots. Is there another area that would be open that she could maneuver her guests to park?
These people down here do it once a year. They just call the town and say, hey, we're going to do this. And all of a sudden, park here and we say, okay.
Think true values. You're having. You're not, you just want to have them. They're going to go.
Little parties here and there. You're not going to stop.
And we take it rarely even with a. Only fuss.
They are. We have an Airbnb right next to us. Every weekend at school. Now, they're not really, unless it's a really big crowd, they're not parking on the street for the whole front yard with garden.
Oh, yeah. And that's just what it is.
Yeah, there's side rules up against.
Right. I mean, our obligation is knowing these problems. How do we pass our ordinance to mitigate that?
So parking is a thing that we really need to discuss. I hear what you're saying about the rounds. I agree with him.
Minimum of two.
And we didn't, and also we even say two, it doesn't matter if you say one, two, or whatever. We also need. A waiver process. Doesn't mean people get it. It just means we have to have a process where people say, I need a waiver from that.
I also think we need to, if we're going to start to allow these. The non deforming lot shouldn't be already up. If you could be a loser before.
You know, one of mine of interest, I would think is that seventy five percent. Okay, so you have, if you have Canadian with square foot. Growing small lot. That's a way to small, you know, that's like about five square feet.
Or four.
Uh. You can do it.
Yeah, yeah.
And I was thinking from a process, they break the process. Why don't we say our process is. Two spots are going to be this.
Two spots. If you don't have two spots.
If you know, if you, if you want to appeal it, your process, if you want to waiver from the two.
Uh.
And you have to have at least two spots for your main house. So if you put two more, there has to be at least four parking spots for your lot.
Over only later on the parking.
Yes.
Okay, but.
So the waiver process.
Is to go.
Two spots for the main house at least, and then two spots for the. Um, A U. And if they don't have that, the waiver process is to go to. Of course, yes.
That's that way it's clean. And I would think that. You know, when federal service state, but you don't say, I mean, we have, we have a body already. To do these, you know, exceptions to the rule and.
This. It's a scene. Um.
Whether you can, it's see if you're obviously a lot.
Your lot coverage. Yeah, now I know I'm not quite sure now. I know it's clear on density, but what they struck out here, I don't know if it's covered.
It did. It was seventy five percent.
You know, in here, I think when they allow us to keep.
Oh.
You know, well, you couldn't.
Then we go straight or then we'll say that.
We can't go straight. What happened here is it's not straight. Uh, they just took it out.
A A County, and what they said is we have to allow it, but we also have to be realistic. They, this is a guidance. We can add other things into it.
We know local, okay, a local law established under the section may establish additional offsite parking requirements. And they post to construct that, whether there's sufficient curb area, increasing impervious. Due to the creation of new off street parking. And variability on size of the universal track. They're allowing it. Local law adopted on this paragraph shall provide a waiver process for the parking process. Okay, so.
It still has the main road and building. So the lot coverage would still be in. So if you plan on putting house with lot.
Well, this is saying we may tell people they have to.
They deserve to say that what they, their house and whatever they have on it, the lot coverage. I think.
That's true. You know, on some property, some other properties are not true. R ones are only thirty percent.
Every year. Whatever's on the lot is fifteen. Of the lot coverage, you can't put more than whatever for cloud.
A A County saying. So. I've shared. Anything we touch, we don't know.
Lots of joint work.
Marshals, lawyer, commercial, I'm sure the eight percent.
He said fifty percent.
Yeah.
Um, size of the existing.
Yes, but. You're allowed to have that, but if the needs are lot covered. They're not allowed to have it.
Right.
I understand that you're allowed to put a building that we can allow to have the. Half the size of your normal house, but if it comes down to the whole thing of your lot coverage or your lot.
You're over.
Not allowed to go over.
Well, I mean, let's, let's remember one thing. Our. All of our things right now that we're based off of is all of those are one, R two, and R three.
R king.
Which we're changing. So we have to be careful about the lot cover stuff that we come up with because. One of the things over that you're talking about is forty five hundred square feet. And the house is going to be very close to or even not over fifty percent lot coverage. With your driveway in your house and everything else can be very close. Not saying we're sticking with forty five hundred square feet. The way it's drawn right now, it puts us like right up next to that. And then. At that point, do we say no accessory dwellings in on that place?
That's what I'm saying. That's why, why I was saying earlier. But I think we should also put in a rule in AA County's gun that you're not allowed to have. These auxiliary dwellings on lots smaller than fourteen thousand. Now, our conforming lots of ten thousand, so I'm saying. That we should keep it to our conforming at ten thousand. Then you're allowed to start thinking about, you know what I mean? If you have a nonconforming lot, you're not allowed to have one.
That's it.
If you have a conforming lot, you're not allowed to go over your lot.
It it does. And I'm just going to play devil's advocate here because I've said in the board of appeals things a couple of times. And what it says in there is. By the means of what they're trying to do, are we taking away their right that any other homeowner in town would have? Because of our rule. And if you put that statement in front of our board of appeals, we're taking away the right that you might have because you have a bigger lot. So we had to be.
I think he's saying there's just no space.
Well.
Like it was taking up all the space anyway.
We don't have any space because we have a fifty percent rule on our lot coverage.
That's for everybody.
That's for every, well, that's not true either because R one is only thirty percent. And commercial is eighty percent. So it's, then we're all over the place. We can't just. Strike a line in the sand. We had to be very deliberate about what we write. So you can't be challenged in the board of appeals.
I'm going to, I'm going to. You were talking about this before, everybody. Before we went on. My lot, it sounds very good. I have a house, I have a huge shed up back. I'm not saying I'm going to do anything with that shed. I'm not saying that. Um, but the house sits. Property that's three doors down, which is sold, that's only three thousand square feet. What? And the house sits on. That house would not have any way of doing it, but depending on how you have house on a smaller lot, you might do it.
But then it comes down to the parking. Were you putting?
I'm not saying.
I I was thinking of one of the basic rules of zoning is you can't put yourself. In conflict with zone. Okay, so you're living there and you have it. And there's an interesting term, lot of record. We just assume that anybody who has a plot of ground here is a lot. You know what? I don't know if that's true. We've never gone back and say, you know, we don't ask anybody when they apply for a building permit, through the year a lot of record. We. It may be, okay, but I I truly don't know the answer. Do you know that or?
The only way I know based off of that is whether or not there was a previously assigned tax ID. So like, we have it going on right now over on Baltimore Street. Okay, there was a house there in a garage there. The house was three twenty Baltimore. The garage was technically on sitting on three eighteen Baltimore. They were two different tax bills. So that was a lot of record because that person was paying two different tax bills on that piece of property. If somebody comes in here and they only have one tax ID, regardless of how big your property is, they either have to get an exception to the rule. Or they have to subdivide their property into proper channels and not create a nonconformity. a non-conformity.
If you take a, you know, a lot of things, it's a lot of you can and you can't, but if we say what they're requiring, that this has to be a, you can add these to single family lots.
Sure.
Where the single family dwelling is a detached building. Man, that's only about two, thirty problem.
Yeah.
You know, it doesn't matter what we're gonna call them later, okay, uh, and in that I guess we gotta ponder, do we have to give relief to the public? Okay, so if you have a ten thousand square foot lot and see ten thousand square foot lots probably weren't going to trigger that, the, the base of the house is probably even twenty-five hundred square feet another five, six hundred feet for driveway or something on there. They, they got plenty of rent. They're not an issue. Hell, they can put a driveway back to that unit and people can park on the driveway. Um, and that's not the issue. I, I'm beginning to wonder, maybe we should just create accessory dwelling for that. As if you have um, you know, we're saying ten thousand square feet and then see can we get away with that?
To save the ten thousand?
In other words, if we say, if you have a house and you have, you have your ten thousand square feet, uh, you have sufficient land for coverage and for park. Okay, and you know, and the laws tell us the new law is saying if it's a single family detached dwelling, they're entitled to, to have an E V. Because what we're really trying to do is we don't, I don't think anybody cares that somebody does that in the back of their property and then it, it's a big shed with, with some parking. It's in the other areas where people have a minimum amount of land. And they've already opted upon fifty percent. So what do you do with name you? The only hold, the only uh grammar we have is that that unit can't be larger than seventy-five percent of the main dwelling. Well, most people would say, oh, the hell, I mean, I'm only going to have a four hundred square foot building out there. Yeah. You know how long that's gonna last? Until the person with the eight hundred square feet wants to put in eight hundred square feet. Uh, so that's right now, it's the only hold, and I don't know from reading this that, I mean, they want us to permit more of this use. So I don't think we're gonna find a friendly face there. The lot coverage. We're probably better off saying this area can contribute to stormwater runoff. So whatever you do must have stormwater plant, I mean, what you're doing isn't taxing our existing system, I think.
And you can't go, go, go off you, you can't uh whatever you're building for stormwater can't destroy your neighbors.
An improved stormwater plant. And I, I'm, I think that the one thing we have to do in general everybody. Okay, even if it's not disturbing or the five thousand square feet, we we're going in there, if you have five thousand square feet, you're gonna disturb twenty-five hundred square feet of it. Okay, I mean, um.
Would, would the accessory dwelling also share the water bill with the main house?
Yeah, actually, what, what they're requiring, what they're saying here can't require them to get separate water, so that they are going to tap off, you can, but you can't tap off the mains. Because you're serving the main house.
But they'll have their own electric.
Yeah.
Well, it might not necessarily.
It's always self power.
Be like a granny.
Yes.
We kind of have one.
Good.
There's one.
Down, you know, it's.
Eleven fifty-five West Old Philadelphia Road, they just put that pole barn shed up out there which has an apartment in. That apartment has its separate water, but it has a shared sewer. So we're partially already there, right there, and that's an accessory dwelling on that property. It, it was finished last year.
Stays getting through here by the.
Um.
Rather bold.
Um. I'm only looking at A A because they're ahead of us, and I'm not saying that we follow A A, okay, I'm never saying that. Um. They're also talking in here, they have exceptions for the churches. Or whatever. But we can face some exceptions. Similar to what we just did, it's the shed extended.
Seven, they near that coverage. On various. Cause I look through with the, the government, and I don't see anything about it.
Are you also limited to one accessory dwelling?
Yes. All of them are saying, and this one has, it says A A, no more than one accessory dwelling per lot. So we don't have acreage.
No, no reason, I have forty thousand square feet. So technically, if you only need ten.
I could sub double rate if you wanted to do it. You really could sub.
Lot is allowing you accessory dwelling.
No, all I was saying was, we're not or, what I was saying was, you have to have at least a ten thousand square. So if you have more, then you're still good.
But you can't put one.
Well, this is also telling us, we've got rear and side lot lines.
Unless you put your.
A A is saying.
Make four ten thousand square foot lots. If you have, if you, so that you have twenty thousand square feet lots, you can. But if you have less than ten thousand.
Okay, also it says in here, similar to what the pause did. Um, they have two houses there and they connected them with a breezeway. So accessory dwellings, it's made be separated. Extra, what is breezeway? A separate dwelling unit in directed by a breezeway open or enclosed to a principal attached dwelling in an attention to the. They're going back and forth.
They're saying that you're allowed to have a little awning from your main house to.
I guess.
Yeah. The, the permeable surface that you're allowed to have.
We have to bring in the fact of just because an area that's not next to the water can be something that what we can't because we have to be aware and we run off and we.
And that's, that's where I was. So, but that's also a lot of.
State that they made. It says established setback requirements that exceed existing accessory structure of setback requirements for the side and rear lot lines. I don't think they meant to say that.
I will say one thing that they were talking about, something that we have to in H V C. Most of the time we want in the further setback because people had H V A C units because of how loud they but now people are putting in mini splits, which these places definitely don't have a mini split. Um, and they said to, 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 yeah, that they're not, they're not loud, they're quiet, so you still keep your existing setbacks. And are you notice are thinking about what mini splits are, but this is not why they are. I mean.
Well, yeah, the, the mini splits. I heard it. But they also contribute grand coverage.
That, that's, that's so. Yeah, if you're only allowed to have three or five foot of a setback on things, you can't put anything in in that your setback.
Yeah, we had to do all these parts out there on the corner. But he hung it on the wall. And they didn't block the side. But if it went on the side.
Um.
What were you doing?
I was just thinking too.
That's what this is.
The um accessory dwellings of taxing is that to our water tower when we're limited with what we.
Yeah, and you're right, maybe we go on our system. It's an official E V. All right, now it's not gonna, probably not gonna show water bills with a ten thousand gallon minimum. All right, but yeah, you're right, just without adding that to the.
Yeah, because what, what do we have in reserve at the end of the day?
We actually have more than what we thought. Oh.
So this is probably not something that we really talk about in planning the zoning, but it's probably good news.
Okay, we'll take it.
So number one, we're, we're doing inventory in Bobby's shop today. There's two well pumps that are boxed up and sitting on a shelf in there, so that means we probably have two functioning well pumps. Uh, one for each one because there's two different sizes. That's one. Number two, we figured out how to raise the tank level up by four more feet and not trigger any type of high level alarm, so. It's coming to, to a tower near you very soon. So that'll give us about sixty thousand more gallons of reserve though.
And layman's turn, we found out we can't fill tower two full because then it puts too much pressure coming out, which will grow the houses. So that's why we can't, oh, you go the hallway up. If you wanna go.
And the tower knows when to stop filling?
It does, it has, it has limit switches in. So we can't take it to a high tank position, which is just below overflow. But we can readjust to where the pumps shut off to thirty-six feet instead of thirty-seven, or instead of thirty-four feet. Or thirty-two feet, I'm sorry.
That's good news.
So, and that still leaves us below high tank alone.
Finding that. We can take that, take care of. Um, and few other things that we're taking care of, like the well. Um, some of that are actually in a better spot than what we thought they were, and that's working with N D B and everybody else, so.
That's good to know.
And most of these are really ones that don't.
I think once, once the news gets out, there's gonna be so many families that want to do a bring it on.
I mean, uh, sure, but you're, you're not, they're not going to be occupied. Most of them aren't gonna be occupied twenty-four seven. So, three, six, five.
And we don't count for, we really don't account for people that have new children.
Yeah.
We only account for ever how many bedrooms a house is, and so.
There might be a.
There might be six kids living in a bedroom house. I can show you some water bills.
Well, I mean, I think you give them two fifty gallons, but we give.
Yes.
So.
So the E V would be like an internal thing that we're watching.
What was these water players using?
Yeah.
Today, and they, I think they pick an E V by, by bathroom. Each bathroom.
Yeah. That is true.
And uh, so they don't care about, they're assuming that you get four bed baths. Using a thousand gallons of water to drinking it there.
And we're with our water study, there's no so I can, I'll say it out loud, our water study says that we have about four hundred houses we can technically put in. But to be safe, we should stop at fifty percent of that, which would give us two hundred new dwellings to be able to put in. Scott Gardens is.
Our, our stuff is still actually Scott Gardens build out, right?
Yes, yes.
Scott Gardens entity.
Mm-hmm. So we're, we're in a lot better shape than, than what A E com told us.
That, Charleston, what is it?
No, Carlson's not a part of us at all.
But weren't we discussing that last time?
No, no, that was Scott Gardens.
We could, we go in there and see.
Yeah, the very, the very back the new section in the houses are kind of what they're proposing. You can go to their houses, do this and touch sides.
I hit zero lot lines, um. So all right, is there anything else you want to discuss of this? Ken and I can work on this. Um. Said they have they do in A A, they talk about must be at least fourteen thousand square feet to have an auxiliary. We're saying, so I don't know. Do we do it?
I mean, I think it, it has to be based off of how we're gonna do lot coverage. So if we have ten, so, you know, let's case in front, Christian, you have a bunch of stuff in your backyard. You have a bunch of stuff in your backyard. So you have a pretty base, have a pretty, I, I, I'm, I'm not scrutinizing, but if you have just your basic house over there, a footprint on the house might be four thousand square feet, but I can bet you that the footprint of it's only like thirteen, fourteen hundred square feet because it went up. So if he's got a ten thousand square foot lot and only uses thirteen hundred square foot of lot coverage, then he's got plenty of lot to build an accessory dwelling on. However, there are people in Cool Springs that build backyard Disneyland's. Like they're like forty-eight percent covered on your property already because they wanted this nice backyard barbecue and.
Uh, I see what you're saying. Then, yeah. And come back to what you're saying. Feels for if we say ten thousand square feet, then we're excluding.
Well, I mean, we just have to say that this does not, this doesn't, this dwelling does not exceed fifty percent of the lot coverage allotted for the property, however we want to word it, because that's how I do it with any other structure.
Yeah.
Somebody wants to come in here and put a monster deck on their backyard, I'm not stopping them. But I'm gonna tell them, you know, when you do this, you can't do anything else with your property ever. Until you tear this down.
But, yeah, I'm thinking that we're gonna do your saying, and just keep our lot covered. You can't go over your lot cover.
I'd probably say.
Without using the number?
Yeah.
Yes. So that takes the ten thousand square foot thing and everybody will be eligible to have one. But if your lot coverage is that you say you're gonna put your uh, yeah, your second dwelling on it, then it would go over your lot coverage.
It's doubtful, Zen with thirty percent coverage would may have to do it.
I can do it with my house ten times over, you know, I got.
You've got a big, you've got a big.
I got one hit of acres.
Thirty percent. Have people.
And you know, some keep in mind for subdivision. They went down to forty-eight hundred, five thousand square feet. They suspend um, the subdivision. No, no way can you, we can do this, put it in there. Just again, but because
We can do that.
There's lots, there won't be a fifty percent coverage.
There's, there's posted state.
I will say.
There will be people, people are buying Charles Town Crawson's.
They're sold out of them there. Um, but.
Those are processes.
Yeah, they don't say they're sold, is their bill.
We don't lose them. Issue.
Saying they're building them at uh three ninety-nine base instead of eight hundred base. Um. Sidebar. Did anybody go over there? They travel down crossing to the back of that nine thousand.
Yeah, I have been here. I've been there a dozen times, so.
Seven.
Well, now I'm talking about how close.
You know.
You can touch.
Yeah.
You can touch out with the wall to wall, then there are. AC units are in an alley with it.
In the alley, yeah, each one, if you look enough, there is a common area, I need part of those, and there's things in it, so it's, it's.
Then you, you're walking through your. Round.
If you see your premise.
Yeah.
Accent.
For you, yeah.
And you can walk through this, the alleyway that is not rated for your new houses, just touch each other. And then you have, yeah, very easy and sitting out there that's getting even closer.
I, I'm currently careful saying that.
Basically.
Not talking for fire department yet. And we gave to them and say, yeah, we're gonna do the forty five hundred square. Like this place about, I can hear that, I can hear.
You said it's fifty minutes later.
Well, not only that. People are talking about like everywhere we are and our houses aren't that close.
I, I know.
But if one of them catches, it's just gonna.
People put water curtains upon the outside of the house.
I know we're trying to get affordable now, and we still can put that in, but regarding me. I know it's a new precedent because it's a new subdivision model, but. I'm thinking that we, in my mind, I still think we should keep the ten thousand square foot. But to make them more affordable. If they, if they do that, then they should just be single story house. Yeah, but.
That's what.
You can't put a mini mansion like Cool Springs.
Now. The majority of what they're showing are the villas, they won't have that. There's a hat, you know, whole shed walls.
And I don't know how much I like the, those, I don't know how much I like block flats.
See, I would like a quad, it was a perfect square.
That's what I was saying, first thing I said for us.
Go. Let's look at the condo.
Yeah.
Though that would.
I will.
I mean, there'll be this one big young house.
Um, fire and all that kind of stuff, not like it used to be, um, so I'm not too worried about that. But I also, it would be a deep person because.
Oh, that's issue fifty five.
Fifty five.
Also, the issue, the fires. Fire from systems, there is no law. The sprinkler system has to be in the data. And um. Yeah, you don't have to put them in your attics, you don't have to put them in your garages. You. The swabs don't need them, your attic still need them, and your uh.
Act my days any space and do. Space, but all closets and.
And and a lot of these, like um. Uh, you remember the big condo fire down there? The reason why it burnt down was because the fire got into the attic and all this is open. Once you get into the attic, it runs it.
Oh, so the attic isn't separate for each individual unit?
A lot of them will not.
Different.
That's not good, they're all.
Yeah, like. Even if you're, but even if you get into the attic, it'll burn it and then burn through there and keep going because there's no. Fire suppression system in the attic, and once you have fire in the attic.
You wouldn't have a firewall between each unit and way up?
New, new dwellings have them now, but it's still. Yeah, but it's still the fact that there is no fire suppression system in your attic. So if you get a fire that goes into your attic. It'll start to grow because there, there's no water hitting it.
Is that right?
Yes.
Maybe there's your water.
That. But by the time it gets down to your fire suppression system, fires are too big, you're basically pissed off. So.
And then what about your D with destruction, what are you, your fifty five? It wouldn't convey to the next family member?
Um. Fifty five and over can be similar to a lot of the other communities. Um, and I'm not too sure if having a single family. What is the? I don't know if that's one where I've been thinking about it, I don't know.
Uh, I'm. I understand.
And the majority of. By that main picture they were showing is this. This is conceptual, this is not real.
And we can still have the fifty.
Listen. Um.
But, um. We can still have the fifty five plus community. But we can just mandate that, like I was saying about the regular stuff. All lots have to be ten thousand square foot, and they all can't be less, like you can't put two story buildings in the lots.
Why wouldn't you want to go up the floor?
Price. We're trying to keep the price low.
But what did you say last time, four hundred square foot?
Well, that was on particular lot, I mean, this is new housing.
These wouldn't be ten thousand square foot.
That, these are five thousand square foot lots.
The villas are not gonna have ten thousand square feet.
I. What I'm saying is to get rid of the villa.
There's. There is. For people.
And if you had a, if a forty eight hundred square foot lot, you have twenty four hundred square feet of coverage, you're not super. That, uh, you're looking at twenty two hundred square feet for how, for the first floor and some. And nobody's gonna want that because then they won't be able to cheer out of the backyard. So he said they get there. That's an.
I don't know.
Pretty tight.
Forty, I, I'm not, I'm not. Forty five.
So much.
I don't know if that was the number.
No.
It's current.
I, I have to agree with you.
Ten.
My lots, look for them. That's what they will be, those things are. You have to.
So that's, that is something that we really have to think about, um. And I've been in townhouses that there is yard out back, there is, there is nice yards out back. Um, but they're still having a deck, they still have had a little garden out behind them, whatever, um. But I also, we have to be mindful that when we're putting this stuff in, that doesn't become timber brick. It's a. Development ever near.
It was absolutely.
Now section eight.
It's, yeah, it's right, right across the street basically from the Walmart.
They have development right behind it.
Brown's auto body. Let's go from, oh.
Right behind that, there's element back in there.
It was one.
So.
New.
Easy certainly.
So.
Very.
About. I know if we do the villas. And these are same story villas, these are, I mean.
How many? When you see, four villas?
Four, this, this picture has three. But it has the garage, prompt for.
So it'll be sixteen units, twelve to sixteen units.
Of the total, yeah.
Of the total.
I, the, the unmoved here is what we say is the minimum lots us. And we tell them it's five thousand square feet.
But their villas would be a little bit.
So trying to say. Because we're putting.
No zero lot line or connected.
Yeah, yeah.
And the villas would probably have common grounds, like right now it says that we can have, what's it, uh, multi-family and six thousand square feet, right?
And what do we do with the new blocks that we already have now?
The lot required is six thousand square feet for a multi-fam, a multi-residential.
See, in a subdivision, you're allowing that subdivision to fly with the same year. Okay, that's your standard in perpetuity, and and you don't have to do anything to anybody else because. Using numbers, they fall under code one fifty, the rest of the lot falls under code one seven five.
Yeah, sure.
I still agree with fire department um on the twenty five foot or whatever.
You're right.
But physical, so even these alleyways, and there is, they're catching yards back here. There is fifty feet between phase one and phase two with the woods that are here. Um, and this is not part of it, this is a drain further down, it's just the section.
And only one person has to be fifty five as an owner to get in.
Yeah, that's bad.
Like you could have a fifty five year old man, you could put a forty year old woman, they could bring in children. It wouldn't strictly be.
I'll have to see what.
Yeah. So he's getting by on.
Um.
Of the rest of them, people who live.
See the woods, you're not. If you're grand, you would.
But they, but they can't live.
With a lot of older people. For people.
Well, it's.
Understand, but they wouldn't live there.
You can both, all that anywhere inside that lives there permanently, that's the.
Selling this. That is how it works, the, the basic, the basic theory in, in advertising is. People buy. People who buy a product are normally ten to fifteen years older than people that. What's at the after price?
Oh, okay.
Okay, so if I say fifty five, they're sixty five, seventy.
Okay.
Then also.
And and just a, a one point of clarification of these lot sizes. These lot sizes that they're proposing are because of the role of children, that, the role of the huge chunk that they are. Uh, giving to open space.
This is adding to our.
So the lots could be bigger if we don't have that big open space area.
It's far better for us to have the.
Well, it's, it, you know, we're straight. Okay, it's what we're doing with them on there, but. We can't just say, hey, you know, they're. They're really trying to maximize everything by going to forty eight hundred five thousand square feet, when they had enough land, quite honestly, to do six thousand sixty five hundred square feet. Okay, we're making, we're making this concession so we get that ground for thirty.
Okay.
So.
That, we're trying to come to that. That's.
Six thousand, is that what's in our right rate, six thousand or attached?
Yeah.
But we, that's. For villas are good. He built, he built three thousand four. What I'm saying is each unit. Each unit through each. That'll be good for. Okay, it's throwing long, you're not putting a four unit villa on six thousand square foot lot.
Won't be the total square footage for all four.
But.
What square footage is each hill on?
I don't know. There's, there's, it's the concept, oh, it's not real.
But I was thinking, if we keep, we wait for our roof to break down. If I have a six thousand, eighty six thousand square foot lot. You build a dual blocks or whatever. If it's subdued flights on six thousand square foot lot. In with the three thousand square foot lot. So if we're doing a quad blocks at this kind of thing, each unit should have three thousand square feet.
This might be.
Of land?
Um, of what?
Like there.
If you, if you took a line down where the is, your lot size would be.
See, I would have to, I would want to get on what the square footage of this. For.
They want what is single store, you build. Common areas.
But if we say three thousand, how much, how big can the house be if the lot's three thousand? The, the footprint.
In fact, one second, because people are millis. I'm sorry.
We're done.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, one of the, about that extra land, it's not actual land that they're giving us. Okay, in exchange for the smaller parks. One of the other ways that I've seen is done is everybody got their parcel of five thousand square feet. And the joint tendencies with all the other houses. That joint tendency owned. That fifty acres of ground or whatever, they couldn't use it and do anything with it, we want it basically for the town or drainage. So we're, you know, it's, you know, again, just to drive the fairness thing, they're not. They can make these lots bigger, but we wouldn't get that.
And we need that.
Yeah, well, we like that, right?
Yeah.
They're free to develop.
What Nick and I were just discussing, he says three thousand.
We have. The first, then a multi dwelling lot, it says so.
Right.
So if you put a dual blocks on them, each lot has three thousand square foot. If you split the six thousand.
Right.
What I'm saying, block likes, you'd have a twelve thousand square foot lot in each, hence three thousand square feet.
And then, and that was my question to Ken, if each one has three thousand and you're only allowed to build fifty percent of your property?
Okay, depends on, if you're in a R three, yes, if you're a two, yes, R one.
Because at this point, we don't know how big the answer would be.
Well, they said that most of them were going to be about. I remember right, twenty five hundred square feet, but they were talking about two stories, so they're talking about twelve or thirty square feet.
Yeah.
But not the flats.
Well, they said that they were still going to be about two thousand square feet also.
Two, two thousand square foot home, the three thousand square foot lot?
If you combine all of them together and you make it an eight thousand square foot lot, or eight thousand square foot, then you add. The six thousand square feet behind it, then you have to have fourteen thousand square feet total.
To accommodate the two thousand square foot.
To accommodate. If we follow our, our current zoning practices.
Right.
We don't have to follow any of it.
Right.
We can say each one of those quadplexes needs to have. You know, quarter acre. The whole dwelling needs to have a quarter, so all three of those houses together. Needs to have ten thousand square feet combined to that three, we can say that. Or we can say. Each one of your quads needs to have a thousand square foot of free space outside, you can either write it however you want. Because we are rewriting it right now as we speak.
Yeah, but all I, all I was saying to you. It's more. All, all I was saying was, is to keep the same lot, like yard wise for a multi-family. It would be the concept of each dwelling of the three thousand, but you're not really having through that.
Okay.
It's just that outside, so, or, yeah, I was just saying that. The quadplex would have to be on, yeah, like a twelve thousand square foot lot. So each unit would have the same. Land outside.
I mean, these are all hypothetical numbers, so.
Right. Is it close?
Yes.
Like right outside?
No.
Oh.
Cross that. Cross that.
Yes. That's where the chest it is. It's why I was, anyway, all right, it's Nick's time.
Yeah, it's right there.
All right, can, can, can. Start something, I can help out while I come back in, I can't help this Monday, cause I'm usually home, so, um. You wanna start it, send it to me, if you can work on it, kind of collapse, I must have it. Uh, so we can get this started and kind of get like a preliminary, preliminary, and I can take it back to the other board. Kind of talk about it there, and if they have anything, so we'll get from that, um. The other thing that was on the agenda tonight is, kind of talked about it. Marble moving, marble. Marble homes, marble homes, and, uh, manufacturer guidelines are based on.
Keep saying, the foundation, keep, keep the, uh. No trailers until, and add, it has to sit on the foundation.
Change hour, ten thirty.
And the trailer, the RV ones, pockets. Did you see those, the RVs that tires are on it to go in case of.
Just to get up one.
Yeah, we all have.
Waiting for aviation.
Aviation definitions, foundation. Okay, uh.
He leaves the range.
Structure, sufficient. Well. And back.
Will apply, it's going to be sufficient. You have to put it on an A four, by the way, this is, this is a structure.
Firmly attached.
The non.
Tough huts. The one thing we gotta remember, regardless of how these things come in, whether they come in on the back of a flatbed. Where they come in like the traditional trailer on wheels, the tongues and the wheels have to be removed.
Yeah.
Cause believe it or not.
Have they, they've been completed?
Yeah, I, I don't know of any currently in town recently that aren't not on the foundation.
One though.
And make us get it down.
That's on, around Charleroy Street, right?
Yeah.
Where.
We gotta put.
Anyone see it, if the, uh, dirt was dirty.
Yeah. And there's two out on Route seven, or, our little horseshoe right outside of the town limits, both of those are mobiles, you would never know they're mobiles.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's two right down from my house, that one of them is a, an honestly got modular home, I saw him put it up in blocks, and the other one is a double.
Actually, probably what we really need more is manufactured.
They're being labeled now as manufactured, no, they're set where they're built now, and, uh, they're like, uh, they're built.
So.
Home.
Oh, he is good.
I knew it.
Oh, what, what defines certified?
My basement had to be, is certified by an engineer. Uh, it's just a civil engineer.
Yeah, it's, it's a civil engineer.
So. They said that makes somebody come in with founders, I mean.
Yeah. As I've been, obviously, trying to, house, um, looking in is, for regular pre, uh, trailers. When you. Purchase the prefab home from the builder, they're gonna build your house all site in. Two, two to whatever sections, or put on a vast of flatbed, chip it in. Before they bring it to you, they come and either put a slab down for your foundation, it's a sign on three slab. Or they dig out a true foundation and build blocks, and then they bring it, your house in on a flatbed, pick it up with a crane, lower it down. And tire in, and.
Yes, it's anchored the same way as a normal house does to a foundation.
Yeah.
Nice, so do we say it's dedicated or we say it's certified? Does this sound like two different things?
I'd say certified. Foundation, because they all have, even if you're building a house in scratch, your foundation.
So that has to be, like, there's an inspector, there's a foundation inspector, happens by the county.
Yeah.
Is there anything else that we need to add?
Our building here, same having for families. Most of the fires have happened.
The only thing that, the only thing we would be following is, we would have to put in there, we'd see some counties. For foundation requirement, there's nothing in our ordinance anywhere that says we have to have a foundation.
The Cecil County, we have to inspect the founding. Okay, so, all right, so.
Exactly. That's, that's.
Yeah, because like with my foundation, when my house was built, the engineer design said, you know, this is how much your house is going to weigh, this is what size your beam has to be, this is how many. Posts you have to have in the floor, and this is how many, you know, rim boards you have to have, like, my house said on double rim board instead of single. Cause the dull solid log and it's heavy as crap. So it had to be overdone, and all that had to be done by an engineer, stamped and signed and given to the county before the county would even.
Maybe, maybe.
He's, it's hanging down. All the wiring.
I'm sorry, uh.
There has to be, even, even your house had a false race anywhere, had to be inspected for the false rates.
Yeah.
Well, it was inspected by somebody. Looks pretty good.
Block looks like it doesn't want to move.
It's getting me, it's all friction based on that, that, those years.
Going forward from my house, it's a hundred years, um. So, manufactured, we just need to still say no trailers, um, cause yes, people are buying the old, make them look very beautiful.
I love the red trunks.
But it still doesn't have the qualification for what it's called. It's here. Um, but the new ones have name as doing a stick built house, same.
Yeah, and it's like.
Yeah. Okay, qualified. Now, the other thing. Is cargo.
Aren't they beautiful, done right?
And have the.
Nick, I'm surprised you didn't get a container to add, seriously. It would be beautiful.
It won.
You have to make it a house, because our ordinance says we're not allowed to have cargo shipping containers, unless it's approved by planning and zoning. And it can only be approved for up to six months, and if it needs to be on there longer, then it has to go back in front of the board. Yeah, so we would have to say, this is a house, this is not a.
And how do you, you didn't sit on that house? Outside, outside.
I'm doing. Cargo container houses are a thing.
We say.
The alley building.
How so?
The materials? Because the way they're building them in there and they're touching them, they're gorgeous. Can you find out?
Here's what we say, a dwelling needs a single unit by complete independent living facilities for at least one person, including permanent provisions for water, sewer, cooking, eating, sleeping, and life gives.
I guess, as long, as long as it's designated that it can, with the building, cause it sees the town as always.
You know, with how, your framing would have to pass inspection.
Yeah.
Your in, your insulation would have to pass inspection. It would have to pass all your fire code inspections based off of window sizes for bedrooms.
Yeah.
Would have to pass, for our town, we would have to have sprinklers installed and it's.
Yeah, and it's. Doing it by container house.
Yeah, it's not as cheap as you think.
Yeah, you can buy the containers. Make them my house. That's.
If you did your prefab.
Yeah.
Bring in your two pieces. And then you have the container coming in. To, to incorporate, just to make it.
A bigger house?
Yes.
Well, for, for the regular prefab, you, I can buy a, a house like. Any house, like, even, yeah, I can have the house that's across the street coming.
I can hear.
Why do you please keep pulling down every light soon?
Um, so, I, I really don't know, um. All right, and the other, the other thing is, tiny. Tiny homes. Are we gonna talk about tiny homes too?
I think, yeah, I think, you know what, I think we hang our hat. And we hang our hat, that's it, school just needs to be inspected by the town. And kind of, and. By and large, somebody may not like the fact that someone shipped them a container and spent the money to make it a house, or they didn't like. An idea of another time, a tiny house that's, what, six hundred square feet? Or they're probably even smaller.
There's some that are small.
You still need, till these order was silver, so there comes a point where. What you want, you look at all the fixed costs and you say, man, maybe I should make it a thousand.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just thinking about, and I don't know what the people are doing with the, the lot down, I know they're studying it, um, it's three thousand square feet, um. And I know somebody that was looking at it, talking about, maybe, one of them was talking about making it a summer place, and another person was talking about making.
A little corner house, yeah.
Um, or somebody's talking about. Going up, making it smaller so that they have a little bit of indoor, but if it's gonna be a summer place, I believe that.
Yeah, I don't know which, depending on which developer bought it, I have four different guys that came in here with four different ideas, one of them's idea is, got the tag on thing and rebuild the inside, that way it's already. They know exactly what the nonconformity is, and they'll just make it really nice inside. Haven't pulled a permit, as far as I know for it, haven't started building on anything, it, they're just moving trash out as far as I know. But the other guy was the guy that did the one on sixteen thirty nine West Old Philadelphia Road, he would absolutely gut the entire house and leave it all the way down to the stud. And rebuild it, cause that's what he does, he rebuild, rebuild old farmhouses and old structures and turns them into brand new. And he's pretty good. Pretty expensive too.
What I'm saying is, these are things that are coming up, you know, they're coming, um. Things that we also need to talk about, I brought it up at the, um. The other board is, um, and you know, once it's kinda in the area, it'll take about five, six years to come here, um, that corporate. Corporate organizations, um, are buying up. Houses that are short sale now, or they are, um, whatever, um. They are making them boarding muscles. Um, they're ready to friends, um. They're showing that people that don't live there are learning in the town. Um, so there's a lot of things that we have to really start thinking about, for what we're doing with our, um. Regulations, because you don't wanna fall into what's happening, right now it's happening with this.
So it's in Perryville too.
For corporate?
Not for women.
They're allowed where they are.
They are allowed?
Yes. We don't have it, and we don't have it here. And yes, we had something that was going on, but that person was like, they're not renting for mobiles right now, okay, so.
We have a couple heavy hitters, let's go, it is a real quick.
So, these are just a lot of things that we need to really consider, that we don't fall into the trap of taking away what, our, why people come here.
And Tasha did buy the Yellows.
Or zoning codes eight times this size.
I know that, I know that, and every time we pass it, we go, yay.
We have a different thing, now you have states saying, oh no, you can't.
Yes.
Okay.
And they, every year they put in to their, um, that, there's a bill that goes in every year, that they wanna take away local zoning.
Yeah. Because we represent the will of the people that live here.
Well, I don't see how, that's our pride. They can take away.
Since that antidote code that we all have to follow, and they slowly go.
Yeah. See, see this code, I mean, what it just said about, what you can do about eight years, you see all those black lines, that's what they got hurt of, that's all the stuff we, you know, we're talking about today. And we now have to, we needn't worry about before, because we had, you know, we had zoning code that said this is what we do, now they say, well, if what you say is now illegal. You're not, you don't have the authority to say that anymore, I mean, either way.
Yeah.
No other general discussion.
And you need to like step down, because we bantered too much, and this is normal, things we announce, it's too many.
Thirteen potato, I'm moving.
Yeah, I was thinking.
Sorry, second.
All there?
Ah.
Thanks God, we didn't shoot hate lines. No. No.
Uh, nope.
What did it?
I'm trying, it's not going.
You gotta hit some.
I did that too, it's not going.
You gotta. And cancel.
Try to cancel that one again.
Now.